To the Pledge of Allegiance, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the Umatilla County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is... today, May 7, 2025. This meeting is a public forum with a call-in option. The meeting is being video and audio recorded with minutes taken. Our meetings are also livestreamed. If you wish to speak to the board, please come to the podium. Make sure you give your name and your address for the record. Please keep your comments under three minutes. And please share if you're speaking on behalf of others. So, everyone, welcome. Do we have any awards, recognitions, or correspondence?
I'd like to recognize that today is, or this week, is the National Correctional Deputies, Officers, and Employees Week. It runs from May 4th through 10th, 2025. Established by President Ronald Reagan in 1984, this observance honors the hard work and dedication of our correctional deputies and support staff, personnel, who play a critical role in maintaining order and safety within Umatilla County Jail. This is an important opportunity to give thanks and acknowledge the courage and dedication it takes to work as a professional correctional deputy. They are the first responders behind the jail walls and are often forgotten for their daily commitment to safety, security, and professionalism they display every day in the face of a difficult and often dangerous work environment. Thank you very much to the correctional staff and their recognition.
Any others? Move on to the next item, approval of minutes at the previous meeting, April 16, 2025.
Approval, second.
Second, and all in favor, say aye. Were there any additions to the agenda? If you're here for public input, we would like to recognize any visitors. Now is your time. We'll move right into our first business item, Development Code Amendment, and we're going to be moving out of our regular meeting into a public hearing. I call the public meeting to order. I'm calling for any abstentions, bias, conflict of interest, declaration of ex parte contact, and objections to jurisdiction. The agenda identifies the applicable substantive criteria for evaluating the request. That will review these criteria. All testimony and evidence must be directed toward these criteria. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail to afford the decision-making body and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue includes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Now, call your staff report.
Thank you, Chair Timmons. The item before you, text amendment T-100-25, is a proposal from our department seeking an amendment of Section 152, 250 of the Umatilla County Development Code, which outlines the dimensional and design standards. The proposed amendment would revise these design standards for design review in the retail service, commercial, and light industrial zones for projects located along the Highway 395 North corridor. For those of you familiar with this corridor, this is the incorporated parts of the county along Highway 395 north of Pumpkin Center, south of Denzel Road. The current design standards have been in place since their adoption by ordinance in 2019. Some of you might recall our previous work where these design standards were developed through a comprehensive public engagement process as part of the Highway 395 North Economic Development Project, which was a grant that was supported by Transportation Growth Management and from the Department of Transportation and Department of Land Conservation Development. The primary goal of the project at that time was to enhance the aesthetic appeal and economic viability of the corridor. You've probably noticed some of the recent developments out there, which include several new auto sales lots, convenience stores, and several other developments of businesses that have adhered to these standards. So, you've started to see some change in the aesthetics, transportation, and things out there along that corridor. With that said, however, planning staff responsible for reviewing design applications have identified several dimensional and design standard criteria that, although well-intended when it was developed in 2019, are now deemed impractical and not conducive to new development or redevelopment along the Highway 395 corridor. Which, from an economic development perspective, we want the developments along Highway 395 North to look attractive, but we also don't want to hinder new development out there. So, now that we've had a couple of years to implement these standards, we've had an opportunity to see what's working well and what isn't, and so we've proposed some changes to those standards to help streamline development. The criteria of approval for amendments are found in Umatilla County Development Code 152.750 through 755, and the applicable statewide planning goals 1 through 14 have also been evaluated and are included in your findings document. The first evidentiary hearing was held before the Planning Commission on March 27. The Planning Commission recommended approval by the Board of Commissioners, and they did not have any recommended changes to the text. I'll now take a moment to quickly go through the text of the proposed changes, spend a little time explaining why we're doing each one, and then from there, you guys can make your decision on whether or not to adopt the revision. Kelsey, if you don't mind going to page 15. The first substantial change involves clarification on what is defined as a corner property and what is considered the front property line for setback requirements. So, in this case, when you have a property that abuts Highway 395 and one of those side roads out there, for the purposes of setback requirements, the front property line would be considered the side-facing Highway 395. Typically, we try to have the front of the business located facing Highway 395. The next page is on page 16, and this deals with accessory structures. It provides an exemption from the maximum setback requirements of the zone and also requires them to be located behind the primary structure. What we were finding is developments came forward. There's certain occasions where someone wants an accessory structure, like a top shed or something, to store lawn mowers or merchandise, other equipment that you don't necessarily want prominently displayed on the property. You usually want it towards the rear of the property. So, this change would help make that possible for accessory structures, and it exempts them from the maximum setback requirements of the zone. Moving on to page 18, the next substantial change is with window area requirements. This is an example of a standard that was well-intended, where it's almost like a downtown main street where you would want merchandise display areas for your storefronts. But for what we found, that this standard may actually hinder some types of development that want to locate out there, so like your big box stores. Another example is mini storage, which is an allowed use out there. Well, we don't necessarily want windows on mini storage for security reasons and other things. What we were finding is folks had to apply for a variance to that standard to waive that requirement. And what we see in planning is if you have circumstances where you're having a frequent number of variances, it probably means there's something wrong with the code, how it's written. So, this change would make it so windows on the storefront are optional rather than required. The next change on page 20 deals with landscaping. With this change, we wouldn't really be changing the amount of landscaping that's required with a new development, but we are removing the coverage requirement. So, after what the standard said, after a certain number of years, you still had to have a certain amount of coverage. That's really tough for us to monitor, and we'd like to have that requirement removed. And then, the final change is in the design features matrix. So, you might recall when we created these standards that we created this matrix that gives developers options and flexibility on the type of aesthetic improvements that they want to make to their property. It gives a whole range of options, everything from, they can pick different enhancements to the facade of the building, window treatments, things like that. They can include an increased amount of landscaping. And the way it works is you achieve a certain number of points for development, but it gives them flexibility. Well, since we took the window area out as a requirement, we're making it optional here. So, we've reassigned the point value and made it an optional treatment for new developments up there. So, in summary, these changes are the result of staff implementing these design standards over the past few years and identifying a few adjustments that should help streamline the design review process and continue to encourage new development and redevelopment out there. With that, I will take any questions.
I do have a question. Thank you for your report. I appreciate all the work that went into this. I do have a question, of course, about windows. One of the things... You know, one of the things about windows is it softens it, makes it... It softens the front of the building, it makes it welcoming, that type of thing. So, I certainly appreciate where you're going to on this, but I just almost don't want it to look industrial. Does that make sense?
Sure.
But I also wonder, too, if maybe one of the reasons you did that was safety concerns? Was that...
Yeah, so that is a big piece of it. So, there were certain business types that are allowed by the zoning out there. So, an example, let's just say like a farm and ranch store, for example. They don't necessarily need big blocks of window display areas for their merchandise compared to if you had like a boutique-type store downtown where you would want to be able to display those things to public. Also, the businesses out there are typically a lot larger footprint, and so having a large amount of window area can affect things like safety, and then it almost becomes unnecessary for some of the... So, we decided it might be best to make it optional, but there are also safety concerns with certain uses like storage units where we wouldn't want them to have to have windows because trying to screen people's property. So, that was the reason for the change. It still encourages it and makes it an option, which I think is the best way to handle it, certainly, if you have a better suggestion.
I don't. I just wondered if safety wasn't a big concern.
That was a big thought of what you did from there.
Thank you.
Bob, stepping back to 2018, the 19... We had two of our partners in 395, so we were kind of involved in a lot of the discussions. We don't have it anymore. One of the discussions was, it kind of got shifted to the back, but it's really kind of come to a reality, is if you go to page 1, page 21. So, if the front of the property is the majority of the landscaping, and say that back dash line is either Kick Road or Sagebrush Road, what we've done, and I think what you guys have done on 395 North is, I mean, it is a starter that's going to make a big difference for a long time. The rear portion of those properties, there's nothing identifying that that has to participate in landscaping or blocking a view or any. And more and more of those properties, whether it's a, say, a truck, just taking ones that are out there, the semi-truck and the truck wrecking yard, and even the new car lots, the back of their lots are not attractive. Don't get me wrong, those car lots are huge, and they look great driving down north. How do we address the back portion of those? And this came up in 18, too. And so, is it time to look at that, or is that the next step?
Well, that's a great question, and I think it's a little bit about striking a balance. So, when we came up with these design standards, there's a number of factors, especially around landscaping, that we had to consider. So, one of those is water, because you have to have, in most cases, have water for landscaping. So, because of the zoning out there, you're limited to a half acre of irrigated landscape. So, we worked with water resources on that. The other focus was to try and, since it was a Highway 395-focused project, the focus was to make the corridor itself look better.
Right, I remember that.
But we do have some other standards that are in place for certain types of businesses that might have outdoor storage. Those are supposed to be screened by fencing, so I can't guarantee that all of the uses that maybe predate land use laws, there's likely a bunch that don't have any screening. But moving forward, users are supposed to have screening of their, you know, scrap material, things like that, especially if you have like a residential zone on the other side, which we have some of that.
Right.
So, yes, there isn't a lot of focus on the rear of the buildings. I think kind of the idea was, if possible, encourage parking and those types of things to be on the side and the rear of the building.
Yep, I get it.
So, you see that with like the car lots. A lot of the landscaping is out front, and then you probably see employee parking and things like that.
Yeah, I think that is really dramatically changed toward 395 since 2018.
Just a few developments, but it's noticeable.
There it is. And it's great. It's just, and I even think some of the existing ones that may have been not as attractive that have done a great job out front, is that we're getting more and more traffic on those old Sagebrush and get to avoid 395.
I think that's something the staff, we are going to, I know of a couple of potential developments coming out there.
Yeah, I get it.
Might be something we can try and focus on a little better and do a better job of making sure that the consideration...
I don't want to make it a focus, but at least part of the discussion.
Yeah, thanks, Bob.
I just want to piggyback off of what Commissioner Doran just said. I was just out there the other day, and the roads, and I don't know the roads like Commissioner Doran does, but you have 395, and then you have side roads. We have businesses that aren't, the front of the building is not actually facing 395, but there's still businesses, which kind of connects in to what Commissioner Doran just said. The back of those buildings or those areas, they're slightly, I mean, they really are. And so, how do you, I mean, you're addressing 395, so what about the businesses?
That's what these standards do. It is something, if a business redevelops, develops for the first time out there, it's something that we would address at that time.
Okay.
And ensure that they have those areas at least fenced off with side of security fence or landscaping an option, too. But we would try and implement those things when they submit their application for business. But it's only for new development, new or expansion, things like... Maybe your almost grandfather to end.
Sure. Thank you.
All I got.
Okay.
Thanks, good.
Commissioner Shaefer?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. I want to call for any proponents. Call for any opponents. Call for any comments from public agencies. Rebuttal? I call for a request for continuance or to keep the record open. I will now close the hearing, and we will deliberate and make a decision. Commissioner Doran?
I think motion to adopt the ordinance.
And second, to adopt the ordinance, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we'll move back into our regular meeting. Okay, our next item is... Many corrections contract.
This is a continuation of a conversation we had a number of months ago where our building started having some issues with our control panel system and our door locks, all the magnetic stuff that goes along the open and closes. We've done have the project with the key fobbing and the securing of the doors, but both had issues with the fire suppression system and the alarm system. And having that service, we've determined by the contractors that the control panel or alarm and fire suppression system is unserviceable given its age. So, we've reached out and received two bids, Alpine Alarm out of La Grande and Smith Security, with Alpine Alarm being the low bidder of the two at $14,001.799.
I move approval to Alpine Alarm, $14,000.
Do you get as-built from this, maintenance can have those on file? I mean, you get a...
I don't know. That's a good question. I don't know when we have these contractors come in and they would have on this. I mean, this is the original system from 1996.
That's kind of how come I haven't acted that far.
Yeah, it seems to me like whenever we have issues with these kinds of things, usually it's Unitec or Smiths or somebody like that coming out and dealing with them. I don't think, Marty, you guys could work on it.
No.
But where do we keep those as-built files with you, Marty? Or are they in the buildings?
I don't know for sure. We have as-built copies that are up to date. I know if you were getting news about the one thing, we get some of the information regarding...
Oh.
Yeah, we're happy to share.
We have a motion in a second. Thanks. Your next item.
Lord Commissioners, Dan, Lynn, I, Trump County Administrative Services. Before you is a pinky for the actual cutting of the door between the existing sheriff's office at the Stafford Hensel Building and into the newer office space that, the additional office space for the system, for newer construction to actually cut that way between the two so we can finish the remodel project. And it's over $5,000. It's $5,670, but 5,000, yeah, $5,670, which is over the $5,000 that requires approval. I move for approval.
Then move, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes.
The next... The next pinky before you is for the replacement of the roof, the main section, the middle section there of the roof, where the, what we would call it, the rec yard at one time for the jail was in that whole area there. This would be to rip everything up all the way down to the cement. There's asbestos in there, so there would be an asbestos removal on that, and then to apply the new roofing material from there going up so it can be completely redone. We've had this roof replaced before, and there's still, there's leaks somewhere on this, so we're looking at removing it all the way down to the base. And this also includes the removal of the asbestos. And in the end, it will also fix it so the rec yard can be reused for, you know, the total, we had, we went through the ESD to utilize their contract with Tremco, and then Tremco goes out and receives the bids for, to do the job, and we had four bids come back from roofing, Anderson Roofing, Unqab Roofing, and then Carlson Roofing. And Anderson Roofing was the less expensive one at $1.246, which is to $1,246,640.
Dan, that does not include the prepping of the cage, correct?
Well, the cage would be repainted, is what we're working on, and we already have moving forwards on that. It's a little under $3,000. And that is, you know, cleaning the old paint off and applying new paint to the cage. This includes all the removal of the roofing.
Right, yeah. I just wanted to make sure that, and we're doing that before, we're doing the cage repair. Thank you, Marty. I see you back there.
I've waited several times, so I'm going to say it again. I had a conversation with Marty, too. Since this has got to be, and it needs to be relayed, if this gets approved, that this is a not-to-exceed number. I mean, the change order will actually be a stop work order.
Unless it's to lower the cost.
Yeah, exactly. This, I mean, it's got to be emphasized over and over that this is a not-to-exceed price. And I know it's large, I know that change orders are normal, I understand all of that. In this case, it won't be normal because they've done multiple examinations of the roof, they've taken samples, we've had discussions on parade days, we've had discussion on delays, all of that stuff. So, I guess if this passes, I just think that needs to be clear. In my...
Thank you, Commissioner Doran. Anything else?
That's all I got.
Will this affect Court of Operations?
I mean, it depends on how loud the things are, but I think we're...
In the conversation with the contractors, it's been explained that this cannot interrupt any of the court proceedings going on, and they were, they've done a lot of other municipalities, so they're aware of that. Part of the difficulty was that we have to work weekends or early in the mornings or late at night, or however that works out, they will make sure that they're on track and on schedule.
My concern is kind of what Commissioner Doran was just talking about, you know? And if the judges are saying, "Stop working," are they going to come back and say, "Hey, we had to finish this a long time ago, but because the judges had stopped, now we're over."
Right.
So that's where, that's why, that was the reason for my question.
Right. And like I said, that has been stipulated over and over, and we can make sure that when we get to a point where we say, okay, this is approved, here's, here's the list of things that are, the stop order, change order, the fact that they're can't be out charging for due to court or, you know. You know, those are the type of things we can get together with Anderson's, like, here's your feeling. They've done multiple, multiple where, you know, they have issues with. So I, I don't foresee that as a problem because it hasn't been.
Experienced teachers are more forgiving than judges, so.
Yeah, okay. I don't know that I've experienced that. It, it, it has been addressed. Not going to be a excuse for delay or for.
Thank you. Thanks, Marty. Knowing that this is gonna deplete our, our accrued facility and maintenance budget, it has to be done. So I'm gonna move for, and I do thank Dan and Marty for how much work they put into putting together and assembling this. I'm gonna move to approve authorization to spend one million two hundred and forty-six thousand six hundred and forty dollars with Anderson Roofing to replace the courthouse room.
Okay, well, I actually do have something to say. And so, but I appreciate both of your comments. I would like an itemized, or an itemized statement from Anderson Roofing.
I have already requested a, a schedule of charges. So what we should have is, I guess it's called schedule of values, but how they, how they came up with their bid, it should have all of the different parts of the heat. As soon as I receive that, I will.
Thank you. Do we need to amend the motion? Add a change order is a stop order?
I think you want to make it clearer.
We want to make an amendment to that. Okay. Dan, did you want to make another motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion and an amendment to, on the floor. All in favor of the amendments? Say aye. Aye. No, you, you go put an amendment first. So all in favor of the amendment, say aye. Aye. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Motion and amendment passes. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you guys for all your work on it. Thank goodness it isn't. Thank goodness it isn't raining.
Okay, our next item. Mobile emotion?
This isn't Brian's first time, so go easy.
We don't have to go easy on that.
Oh, that's.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Here to request purchase of a Simline, it's a mobile emotion tank, which we use to carry our dirt patcher oil in. Currently, we are using two hundred and twenty gallon totes to move the oil to all of our areas. We get purchased in that too. So we're doing pothole patching in Hermiston, Bill, or wherever. We're toting around these two hundred and twenty-five gallon totes, which is very inefficient, very messy, and it's just not working out. Well, we've been doing it for lots of years, but this company is dirt patcher. So the dirt patcher machine we have, this has been invented and made to work hand in hand with our dirt patcher pothole machines. Gallon tank, it's heated and it can be transferred with a pump to the dirt patcher, and it's easier to fill. And it's, the dirt patcher is something we will have for years and years and years. So that is our pothole. So the tank was forty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty.
I move for approval.
Second that, and knowing that this is not a general.
Then move in second. If all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. Public Works, Community.
Don't go away.
You got a few over here.
Yeah. Next, we are Senetics. They are our headphones. They are the little, if you drive down the highway, any state highways, you'll see the D O T workers with the little yellow earphones with the mics on. We use the same type of system. The system that we have is from two thousand seventeen. They work great. It's hearing protection and it's a way that we communicate with our dump trucks and it's, it's our safety. It's a mechanism for people to make sure that they're out of the way and not being anywhere they're not supposed to be. And it's a way we can communicate with our chip seal program, and we use it all through our paint program. So we start using these probably in about a week, and we will use them there through October, every day of the week, all day long. So the, what we're looking for is there's five more headsets, another hub, and a charging case. The total for that is eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars.
How long does it charge last?
It'll last all day. Yep, it'll last ten hours.
Approval.
Then move in second. I have a comment a lot about being a commissioner, and I thought this was very interesting. I wondered how people, you know, if they were jumping up and down and, you know, how you did communicate. So I think, yeah, I thought this was interesting.
Yeah, we, for years, we, before seventeen, when you communicated, there probably wasn't a lot of jumping.
Yeah.
What's really amazing about these things is how you can be standing right next to the machine or any loud noise, and you can speak in this tone of voice, and it'll know to block that machine out. And your voice will come across there clear. It's not have to yell. It's calm. It's, it's a very, very good safety.
Very interesting.
It still jump up and down.
Yes, yes, you do.
Then move in second. If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A greater purchase.
Yes. Next, we're, for already purchased another six seventy-two six-wheel drive motor grater from Pape Machinery. The motor grater is at a forty-two percent discount. The normal price of the grater is four hundred and thirty-eight thousand with a guaranteed buy pack price of five years, five thousand hours of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-eight. It is a budgeted purchase. It's part of our annual equipment replacement. We expect the delivery of this sometime in September. Right now, John here has an incentive program that's reducing the price of the graders because they just have, the inventory is kind of coming back up, I believe. And so we're saving eight thousand dollars. So we're looking for delivery sometime in February.
Money to pay for telematics?
It's pretty good savings.
I move for approval.
I will second that, and I love the guaranteed buyback price, the discount and that initial eight thousand dollars in savings. I think, and your homework, and I appreciate that.
Buyback is a very good thing.
Yes.
Then moved in second. If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brian did great.
Thank you.
Want me to handle this one?
Air forklift purchase.
What's nice to see is we actually have two people in the crowd that, that have an interest in this one. Both Steve Wallace, the president of the, I think, air board, and Jody Hinsley, the vendor representative. So I'll let Steve chime in, but this is a request for a used two thousand eighteen Genie forklift from, the low bidder was Pape Rince. They were fifty thousand one hundred and forty-four eighty-one. Octane at two prices, eighty-three nine fifty and eighty-four nine fifty. But Steve, you want to let us know what all that's gonna be used for with both locations?
Right.
Yeah, but make sure you say your name and.
Steve Wallace. I live on Alpine Drive in Hermiston, Oregon, A one zero two one, County Resident Gores, and I am the chairman of the fair board. To reject why the importance of new forklifts and is the one, and I speak on behalf of the rest of the board. Genie is the one that we would prefer based on experience, that we've rented one for years, and we know that that's the machine for us to accomplish everything we need to do to set up and take down for each county fair. Any questions for me, commissioners?
I, I think that not just take down and set up for the county fair, but year round from the new, so with the new loft up above with the.
There's so many other things we could do with it, but experience.
I, I think it's, it tells a lot that you've already used it and are familiar with it and what its capabilities are, so.
I have a question on, is it octane for, I know nothing about this. Okay, I know what they are, that's about it. Anyway, these octane forklifts, is this an octane forklift too?
I do not know.
Octane is the vendor.
That's the vendor. Okay, so that is.
That would be my guess, but I don't, I do not know them.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
They're a dot com.
Thank you. I did not know that. I wondered.
Thank you. I move for approval of the purchase of the two thousand eighteen Genie forklift.
Then moved in second. If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
I should be there by two.
Can I ask one more question? Since you approved it, how long will it take to rupture this, don't you stand, sorry? How long will it take to finalize everything and get the Genie on site, the piece of equipment? Your best guess?
Yeah, right behind you.
Now that I have approval, I just need to find out where it's at. We'll make it happen as fast as we can. I'll just communicate with Steve.
Couple weeks, probably.
Oh, at the most.
At the most?
Yeah, I would say a week, we could probably make it.
All right, thank you.
You got the expert in the room. Let's ask her.
Thank you.
You got the expert in the room. Let's ask her.
Well, I just met through the county process. That's all, that's all what I meant was the county process.
This is the process and then you'll send it in.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it.
Can I ask a question? Should I stand up? Yes. I'm, I'm Jody Hinsley, and I live at three two nine four five Thorny Grove Lane in Hermiston. I'm representing Pape today. For the, for the purchase, how do we get the appropriate billing address? So that that goes to the correct place?
You can either use this address or the fair address.
Okay, either one? Okay.
The invoice will get here, either way.
And then do I just send those documents to who?
The documents will go to the fair.
Okay.
Fair office.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
ED payable, Kim?
My name is Kim Beck, Yumitilla County Human Service Director. I am here to respectfully ask that we pay thirty-six thousand and sixty-two dollars to rebath of Tri-Cities for a bathroom remodel for an individual that we served. This is a reimbursement program through the Office of Developmental Disability Services. We've already submitted it in. We'll probably have it, have the money back to us within it warrants the checks next. It's a very quick process.
Approval.
Then moved in second. If all in favor, say aye. Veteran services.
So, I'm still here. I'd like for you to, to talk about our third annual veteran stand down and respectfully request that the agreement with Wild Horse Resort and Casino be signed for the event. This event, this will be the third year. We have, we continue to partner with the Confederate Tribes of the Yumitilla Indian Reservation Veteran Service Program. It has been an amazing event. We continue to increase the number of veterans being served. The first year we had about seventy-five. Last year we had over a hundred and fifty, and that was the veterans number, not any dependent or supports. So we had over two hundred and fifty people come and go during that day. We are hoping for, we are forecasting it's probably even a larger event this year. It is very well received. We've got great partners with the Veterans Administration. We actually get surplus from them, and so we bring in pounds, I've stopped saying items, pounds of surplus for, for veterans and specifically to help veterans who are at risk or are experiencing health.
This event is absolutely phenomenal, and Kim and her team do a great job. When she talks about surplus, you walk into a room Wild Horse, well, the same room we had our lunch in yesterday, and there are just piles of sleeping bags and just things that are free for veterans to come and use. Plus, they even have folks there that will cut hair, which I thought was neat. But really, any type of services that veterans can need or use are there in the room, plus family support. It's a wonderful, wonderful event. Thank you for putting it on once again.
We, we're thrilled to do it. It's, it's one of our highlights of, of the year.
Lot of work into it, and they do a fantastic job.
You do a lot of work with veterans too, don't you?
I was just gonna say, I am very, very, very involved with veterans. And for our area, Union County, Yumitilla County, rural county, this event is by far the biggest and best as far, and bringing in the most veterans from all, and they have so many resources that you can find in one location. And for rural, it's amazing.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
It's very heartwarming too, isn't it? I mean, you walk through there and, and you see the veterans from all ages and their families, and it's quite a deal.
Which I didn't know if you know, but I am a Navy veteran. Just so you know.
I did know that.
I would also mention Lola Lopez, the Veteran Service Coordinator, who does the majority work on this. She and her team are, is probably actually on the video.
Oh, they are? Yeah. They do a great job. It's been moved in second. If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you.
Hope to see you all June fourteenth. Wild Horse to you.
Solid Waste Committee appointments.
There are two members on the Yumitilla County Solid Waste Committee whose terms have expired. They're both eligible for reemployment. It's reappointing Klaus Towne and Mike McHenry to the committee.
I would go to adopt order P C C twenty-two five.
Then moved in second. If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thinking ordinance. We are we are now moving out of our regular meeting into a public hearing. The meeting is now open to the floor for a public comment on use of public property for camping. Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, record before commenting. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Okay, I have to ask, do I go down this checklist? Right, you may want to ask. So would the sheriff's office like to come and present?
Commissioner Josh Roberts, Yumitilla County Sheriff's Office. This suggested ordinance came about in that we have areas in the county where people have set up and established quite extensive. People have set up and established quite extensive camps and under, if you recall, a few years ago Oregon adopted legislation. Required uh uh an entity to have time, place and manner restrictions. In their rules or regulations or laws before we can take action and absent that, um, we're kind of powerless to to move people along. So we have had some uh experience, you know, uh, over at the Oxford Trail in Hermiston. Had some experience uh up north and in moving people out, but that was because they were regulated by other entities. This ordinance is specific to county properties and gives us the ability to say. When you can camp, where you can camp and how you can. And so the bulk of this ordinance uh focuses on allowing for, say, a tent overnight, the person gets up. Cleans their stuff up the next day and moves on. If people start building structures, if they stay for extended periods of time, it gives us the ability to go in and say, okay. You need to move and that's really kind of the. Paraphrased down, it's about like, yeah, because it's a pretty extensive ordinance.
So is it for all county properties or just like certain, certain pieces of county property?
It's all county properties.
So the courthouse, for instance?
Yes. Well, actually, I I would have to defer to Doug on that because since the courthouse is in the city limits, it might fall under city ordinance, but uh. Some are like work sites that are in the unincorporated areas and that kind of stuff with.
They'd have to be out by seven AM.
Yeah, they can camp from seven PM to seven AM and then at seven AM they have to break their camp down and move. And they can't stay in one spot more than five consecutive days, after that they have to have moved locations. They can't bounce back and forth between the same locations, they can't go back to a previous spot for sixty days, for at least sixty days.
Answered that first question.
Josh, um. Passes. Is Sheriff's Department gonna need additional personnel to monitor this or how, how, what's your plan if this passes?
Uh, I'd love to go ahead because the Sheriff's Office always needs more personnel. If you would give it to us, we will have to take it. Just like the, the ones up at uh Milton Free Water and then over Oxford, we are gonna have to make it a point to monitor. Uh, there's, if if you don't come back and and follow up, it's just gonna keep coming back to the same places, so yes. It is gonna put some more onus on us to to monitor these sites to make sure people aren't uh, you know, building camps and that's really what we're, we're trying to prevent. All of the camps that we've dealt with uh this year and late last year had uh, people had built structures and brought in a ton of stuff. And then when we move them out, all that stuff is left and so we want to just say, hey, if you're gonna camp, that's fine. But you know, a bunch of stuff, can't build structures, you have to move on. Stay in one spot.
You know what's amazing about that is that the one on River Road, right there across. Line, Simplot, so the. About seven weeks or eight weeks ago, my first time I visited that, there was like three tents. Barely, I mean, there was garbage, not, not that you couldn't dig up and put in the garbage.
Yeah.
As I've visited that maybe once a week since then. It's just become. Hazardous waste site.
Right.
And I. It's. No response, I'm not even sure this would make those people move, but um. Maybe a dozer. I don't care if they can't move on, can't move, I, they can move all around. We've had that in Hermiston with the people from Eagle from day one. But. Whole West End as far as that goes. But this trash is just becoming overwhelming. I I bet there is, I don't know what you guys took out of the river, two tons, something, it was a big number.
I thought it was seven.
If it was seven tons, there's probably twenty one tons here. And it's all been done in like the last eight to twelve weeks.
And I think this ordinance really captures that, you know, that there, we have to recognize the need for compassion for people who are experiencing homelessness and and not their own making. You know, people need a place to sleep if they, they buy a tent and and pop it up for a night. Get out of the weather, I can empathize with that. What we can't allow are these permanent or semi-permanent structures with seven tons, twenty tons of trash coming in. Near our waterways, that's really what this is about, it's not about going after homeless, it's just about the, the health and safety of. The entire area and all of, and and all of us, not just people camping, but also everybody around that comes in and recreates and.
Well, the disheartening, the disheartening portion of that is less than a mile away by, as the, as the crow flies. There's a facility that they could get in, out of the weather, they have beds, night beds, warming, cooling, year-round beds. And then if they, if they earned it, a structure delivered. And then, and the barriers are extremely low. Every time I mention that. Different conversation.
I agree.
It's a different kind of people.
I've had that same conversation with people, we, uh, when we were down there, we offered to bring in CCS, we offered to, to get them in touch with stepping stones. And uh, not a single one of them.
I get it.
Uh, to, to be available.
They just want to argue.
Some people do choose um to, to live that way and, and that's fine, if you want to live that way, great, but we need to do it in a clean and.
Still have to.
It's still a civilized um population.
So what happens after seven AM and if they're still there? And do you tell them to move on, do you send them to a certain location? What happens to the, to the people after seven AM?
I, I think our intention is to be consistent and continue to offer those services, whether they avail themselves of it or not, but ultimately it's you, you will pack up and move on and if you don't. We will pack their stuff up and we, we would have to, we're gonna have to identify some processes. Um, I'll be working with, with Bob, I'm sure, to figure out how, because in the ordinance, if we do take possession of their property, we have to hold it for a certain amount of time. Give them access to it and, and so I, I don't know what that looks like as far as the storage component of it. But it does give us the ability to, okay, if you're not gonna pack up, we're going to pack you up. Take action.
Yeah.
Hang on a second. Are you done, Commissioner? Okay.
Yep.
Okay. I have a couple of questions, one, um, I was out there, I was out there on Monday and toured um that side of the county, the west side of the county. And uh spent several hours with code enforcement, looking at different areas. And um know exactly what Commissioner Doran is talking about because we went down on the river and took a look at. You're right, it's hazardous waste is what it is, but my question, I think, not only goes to you, but maybe to, maybe to Bob also. Vehicles, there was a couple of homeless people there that were living in their cars, they're living in their vehicles. And they're moving those around, but we also have families too that are um maybe not on county property. But living with kids in old RVs with no windows in them and absolutely no electricity, no water, no nothing. So what about the vehicle portion of this? Is that something we're gonna allow? Because I thought that was a no. Yumitilla County, that was an ordinance that.
Wouldn't address that.
Yeah, that.
It does.
If it, if it's operable and movable, yes, they can.
They could keep moving, right? Yeah, that part I get.
But they could live in their cars. Or camp in their cars.
I don't know.
Well, did you have insight on that?
Yeah, so um. Vehicles considered solid waste if it's inoperable and unlicensed. Whether regardless if it's on private property or. Doug answered the question. They need to be licensed. And there are um standards in the ordinance on, for example, if you're parked on public property, like how far away from like a school you have to be. Move, keeping the vehicle, there you have to move at a certain distance, can't just park along the side of the road.
So if they don't have a license plate or if it's expired, then that is no. Running to was um, I mean, the vehicle was running, it just didn't have a license plate.
On that topic, I would add specifically to motorhomes, what we're running into um in, in terms of like abandoned vehicles and I imagine for the solid waste, we'd, we'd have the same issue. Getting the tow companies to want to come out tow because. Certain things they have, they, believe it or not, they have to check for asbestos before they can dispose of it, that's a costly thing that they incur. So um, that, that, that's a hurdle that we've run into that I think we're gonna have to have a discussion on. Uh, how we're gonna compensate the tow companies and make sure that, that they're more willing to come out because that is, that is one of the hurdles. We've identified that it's, it's out of law, we've identified that a lot of tents will just tag it as abandoned and we call for the tow truck and it's like, no, not gonna come out. It sits there and says, help me figure something out. I just put that out there as some, the kind of. Let's have solutions.
I did want to comment on Commissioner Doran. Stepping Stones, I was in a meeting with them yesterday and um Capco was there also, we have Hermiston. And both of those facilities have waiting lists. And so um, you know, that's something that we're gonna have to address too.
Yeah, you're talking about the.
I'm talking about the.
Not the bed. There's, there's sleep center beds available.
There are sleep center beds available, but they have people that have already done the fourteen, you know, fourteen days and then they're eligible to go into the hut. And unfortunately, they just don't have, and I know that's something that they're working on, but unfortunately, you know, we've got waiting lists and so.
But they do let them stay in the, the bed.
In the, yeah, in the sleep center. And they're doing a fantastic job, I mean, they really are. And they're, they're as frustrated as everybody else because they are low barrier, that people, um, if you, if you try to direct folks that direction.
And I, I agree that I've seen um that folks come out of there, which is, is encouraging, I like to see that, I wish more people would avail themselves to it. Reasons for wanting to.
Little success stories too.
Yeah.
Individuals.
Okay. Um. Uh, call for proponents. Mr. Wallace, are you a proponent or opponent?
Yeah, just wanted to ask quite a question to the sheriff's. Okay, it's in the close proximity of where I live, uh, BLM grant in my neighborhood in Hermiston. Again, Steve Wallace, eight ten twenty one Alpine Drive, Hermiston, Oregon, nine seven eight three eight. My question is um, what's the relationship, Jim, if you can answer this question? With BLM and their officers that would. Because we, I see the. Home, we're leaving in the morning. On um, backbeat road or back.
Uh, we have good relationship with them, they, they have limited resources here, so. Once we do identify a problem, we can reach out to them and uh. They've done some other camps on uh.
That's all joy.
Then then you can bag it that intersection and some others, so we, they do work with us. Takes a little time to get them.
Go ahead, thank you.
Great question, Steve, because there's all, West End and Yumitilla County is checkerboarded with either URO or REC, BLM. That's all these.
REC.
Twenty to two hundred eight of parcels. Jim's right, we, under Sheriff, um, Littlefield's right, we've had really great relationships, they're just, Stephanie is a one, one gal showing. And makes it tough, but the, the neat thing about the BLM compared to BOR and some of the others is. If you, if you sit there and they make a commitment to, to repay us for sending community corrections out to clean up and stuff, they do it instantly. I mean, some of the others, it's not quite as quick. Yeah, it's, much as I dislike BLM.
Right.
In this circumstance, they, they've done a great job.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Are there any other opponents? All from comments from public agencies? Rebuttal? Uh, call for a quest, a request for continuance or keep the record open?
I, I would like to continue this and have further discussions with the sheriff's office on some of the details before we.
Right, with that, uh, we will close the hearing. And we're back in our regular, um, regular meeting. So we'll just continue that, Doug. All right, our next item on the list.
Already.
Supplemental budget.
Good morning, I'm Christina King, I'm the accountant here at Yumitilla County Finance Department, I am substituting today for Robert Paul. And now budgets. And he instructed that I just read my, um, right here, the twenty twenty five twenty eight general fund election program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate.
Yes, we need to move. We'll move out of our regular meeting into a public hearing, the meeting is now open to the floor for public comments on supplemental budget. The staff report.
All right, so twenty, again, twenty twenty five general fund elections program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding, not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in local revenue of twenty thousand dollars, an increase in materials and services of fourteen thousand dollars, an increase in capital outlay of fifty thousand. And a decrease in contingency of fourteen thousand. The next one, twenty twenty five dash thirty two subcontracted services program requires supplemental budget. It requires an increase in state revenue of one million six hundred and five thousand dollars and an increase in materials and services of one million six. Twenty twenty five dash thirty nine justice reinvestment program requires a supplemental budget, requires an increase in local revenue of fifteen thousand. An increase in state revenue of fifty five thousand and an increase in material and service. Order number twenty twenty five fifty, emergency grant, emergency management grant program requires a supplemental budget, requires an increase in local revenue of ten thousand. An increase in federal revenue of seventeen thousand, an increase in materials and services of ninety two thousand and a decrease in contingency of sixty five. Order number twenty twenty five dash fifty one, the jail program requires a supplemental budget to increase state revenue of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Increase in capital outlay of ten thousand dollars and an increase in. Twenty twenty five dash fifty eight, justice reinvestment program requires a supplemental budget to increase the beginning cash of three hundred and forty thousand. An increase in materials and services of a hundred and ninety thousand and an increase in contingency of one hundred. And the last one, twenty twenty five dash fifty nine, victims conference program requires a supplemental budget to. Ending cash of eighty seven thousand, increase in federal revenue of fifty five thousand, increase in materials and services of eighty seven thousand and a decrease in contingency.
And that is all the supplemental stuff I have. Is there any discussion? So we've had a public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay, um, is there any opponents? Is there any opponents? Comments from public agencies? Their fault for rebuttal? Request for continuance or to keep the record open? Okay, I will now close the hearing. We will now do deliberation and decision.
To adopt budget order twenty twenty five dash twenty eight?
Been moved in second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Budget order 2025-32?
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Prove budget order 2025-49?
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Move to approve budget order 2025-50?
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
I've moved to approve budget order 2025-51?
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Approval of budget order 2025-58?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Approval of budget order 2025-59?
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Adopt that. Thank you.
Oh, dude. Just warming up.
Now, budget transfers.
Morning again, I'm Christina King. Department, the accounting department. I'm filling in for Robert Hall going over the appropriations transfers. Pressure order 2025-52, EU tech reserve, which requiring a transfer from to, excuse me, not known at the time of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $75,000 and a decrease in contingency. Order number 2025-53, the general fund admin services program requires a budget transfer to increasing personnel services of $17,000 and a decrease in contingency of $75,000. Order number 2025-54, general fund assessors program. Requires the transfer to increase personnel services of $20,000 and a decrease in contingency of $20,000. Budget order 2025-25, the school-based health center. Requires a transfer to increase personnel services of $24,000 and a decrease in contingency. Order number 2025-56, environmental health onsite system program requires a transfer to personnel services, use contingency of $75,000. Order 2025-57, health organization modernization program. Requires the transfer to increase personnel services $25,000 and decrease in contingency. Order number 2025-60, stimulation program requires an increase in materials and services of $250,000 and a decrease in contingency. Order number 2025-61, fairgrounds improvement program requires an increase in materials and services of $20,558 and a decrease in contingency of $20,000. Order number 2025-66, the general fund admin services, CIS program. Require the transfer to increase materials and service $50,000 and a decrease in contingency of $50,000. Order number 2025-67, general fund family planning program requires the transfer materials and services $100,000 and deep contingency. Order number 2025-68, the general fund health program requires a materials and services of $25,000 and a deep contingency of $25,000. Order number 2025-69, general fund program requires a transfer to increase materials and services of $25,000 and a deep contingency of $25,000. Budget order 2025-70, the log library program requires increase materials and services of $10,000 and a decrease in contingency of $10,000. And the last one today, budget order 2025-71, mediation services program. Require the transfer to increase materials and services of $50,000 and decrease in contingency of $50,000.
Thank you. Thank you. Very discussable.
Chair, I have moved to adopt order budget 2025-52?
Second.
Been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Move to adopt budget order 2025-53?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, say aye.
Aye. To approve budget 2025-54?
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Order 2025-55?
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. To approve budget order 2025-56?
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Move to approve budget order 2025-57?
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Move to approve budget order 2025-60?
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Move to approve budget order 2025-61?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Move to approve budget order 2025-66?
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Move to approve budget order 2025-67?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Move to approve budget order 2025-68?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Move to approve budget order 2025-69?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Approve budget order 2025-70?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Move to approve budget order 2025-71?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm just here to say, Christina, that when Robert does it, he clears the room. You did not.
A National Historic Preservation Month proclamation.
Okay, this is coming before the board to proclaim and declare May 2025 National Historic Preservation Month. Recognize the importance of historic preservation and the local contribution to preserving the historic county place.
It move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I just have a comment. I think this is wonderful, and I'll tell you why. Because yesterday we went to a luncheon out at Wild Horse and part of the grant funds that they gave was, it was to a facility actually in, in La Grande that we got to take a look at. We were on the women's tour a couple of years ago and we all walked. We had to walk through this anyway. You know, we all have spots here in Umatilla County, Weston is one, Milton Free Water is another one. I don't know about Hermiston, I'm sure that they do too. But, you know, where historic preservation is just a big deal. And so I think this is It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Cast propane tank.
This is part of the community development block grant that the county received to assist path in making some changes. This particular component of that is to purchase and install an underground propane tank to allow the connection to the outdoor kitchen. So this will do the supply line.
Is there any discussion?
Will move to approve. Second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any, any comments for good of the order? Commissioner Doran? Commissioner Shaker?
No, I, you mentioned it a couple of times yesterday, the Wild Horse Foundation. As you know, I sit on their board after the you know, to date, we're just shy of $20 million in giving to the region. And yesterday after the lunch, the board met for quarterly givings. And the last quarter, we authorized $515,000. It's, you know, Wild Horse has been a fantastic partner for our region and I just can't thank them enough.
I just wanted to mention Milton Freedom Junior Show this weekend. And how many of us have spent Mother's Day there for many, many years?
I did barn duty many, many years on Mother's Day. Maybe you couldn't do barn duty on Mother's Day.
Everybody's looking forward to Junior Show. All righty, so, meeting adjourned.